I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, June 13th, 2022. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans. Ms. Hersi.
Here.
Ms. Colacetti.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin. Mr. Quisenberry. Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meeting of May 23rd, 2022. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Are there any substantive corrections? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Additions to the agenda. I do have one change I would request to make, and that is to move item J1, which is the home ARPA report, up to under presentations. So that would be number three, under presentations. Is there a motion to do that change, please?
I'll move, uh, moving item J up to, uh, following item number two, under presentations.
Second.
I'll give that one to Chandra. Moved by J, a seconded by Chandra. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay. That one's moved. All right, we'll move on to, um, I think we'll try public input first, and then we'll follow by the presentations. Does anyone wish to address the Urbana City Council? Please come up to the microphone and state your name for the record.
James Kilgore. I'm the Director of Advocacy and Outreach for First Followers Reentry Program. And I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about our impending proposal for ARPA funds to be allocated to the program that we've called H3. So I want to talk a little bit about how we came to develop our proposal, and then my colleague Charles Davidson will talk a little bit more about the details. Obviously, when the ARPA funds became available to, we recognized that a significant portion of these needed to be allocated to address the issue of community violence. So we responded to that by writing emails to the mayors of Champaign and Urbana and the county board, and asking for 10% of that funding to be set aside to address the issue of community violence. So that has, that has resonated. We've seen that action moving quite quickly in Champaign County. We've had several hearings at the county board, and we, but we want to make sure that we get on the agenda here at the city of Urbana, since the process for applying for these funds has been a little bit unpredictable. And so in putting together our proposal, we brought together a number of organizations to try to form a coalition to address community violence, because we realized that historically organizations working in the community had been working in silos, and they had been chasing money in silos, and that we, and we believed that we needed a coordinated system of care in order to address community violence, to address the root causes of community violence, and to come up with coordinated solutions to deal with that violence. So in early 2021, we began to have meetings with a number of organizations, and then we came up with the idea of a coalition called H3, which was, which, which stands for Harm, Healing, and Hope. That harm has been done by community violence, that healing needs to take place in order to restore hope into the communities. And this particularly resonated with us as an organization made up mostly of formerly incarcerated people who have been dealing with these issues. We believed that we needed to develop that whole process. So we, H3, and I'll read what our self-definition is, is "A Coalition of Organizations in Champaign County Who Have Joined Together to End Community Violence. We offer vast experience in counseling, education, economic development, outreach, and other forms of support. We believe the solution to this problem rests with those who have been impacted by violence. H3 will open the door to the voices of those impacted and help unlock the resources needed to make a difference. Our coalition includes First Followers, CU Trauma Resilience, Courage Connection, Housing Authority of Champaign County, Youth Build, Youth and Family Peer Support Alliance, Business Elevator, Ready, Set, Go, A Cut Above, and Forever Healing." Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record, and you have up to five minutes to speak.
Yes, my name is Charles Davidson. I was born and raised in Champaign County. So the five programs we're looking at, I'm an outreach specialist for First Followers. The five programs we are looking at is Drop In Center, Go Mad Program for Five Individuals in Urbana, Welcome Home Packages, Mental Health Supports People Impacted by Violence.
Could you just be closer to the mic, because I can't hear you? Or you can take the mic out of the handle.
Yes. Mental Health Supports For People Impacted By Violence, Community Survey Among Impacted People About Violence, Solutions and Violence. And, and area that we, that we are going to be servicing is Scotland, Scottwood Division, Prairie Green, Aspen Apartments, Lyman, Florida's East, Silver Street, Ellis Drive. And it, it's hundreds of individuals in this area. These are areas we will come, uh, be servicing. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Okay. We'll move on to the presentations tonight. We have three related to the budget. First is the Urbana Fire Department. And I'd like to recognize the members of the Fire Department and our emergency services. If you can raise your hand, so we see who all's here. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. And with us tonight is Chief Demond Dade.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Cool. Tonight, we're just here to give a summary of the fiscal 2023 budget presentation for the Urbana Fire Department.
Chief Dade, could you speak a little closer to the mic?
I'm sorry, I've got this mask on. Normally, I'm a bit louder. All right, so, um, like I said, we're here to give a summary of the fiscal year 2023 budget presentation for the Urbana Fire Department. Mainly looking at the reinstatement of a full-time position for the Fire Marshal, changing our record management system, and the restructuring of the Advanced Emergency Medical Technician Training and Certifications. The need, when we look at the need for the organization, reinstating the Fire Marshal position is essential for us, because Fire Marshal serves as a fire code official for the Urbana Fire Department. He's also the prime inspector and arbiter for building safety and code enforcement for the city of Urbana. When we look, the needs of, oh, shoot, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. When you look at the, when you look there and you see the Fire Marshal's responsibilities, you see at the top there, Fire Code Official, Building Inspections. There's many, many responsibilities that the Fire Marshal has, but those are two of the top that we're looking at. When we look at the need for the community, under the Fire Investigations Act, the, the department is required to enforce the state minimum fire and safety codes. The city of Urbana has adopted the International Fire Code for its safety codes in Chapter 5 of the city ordinance. There it dictates that the Fire Chief is accountable for the Fire Code Official in order to oversee and carry out the enforcement of life and fire safety codes. When we just look at a snapshot here of our organizational chart, you see that the Fire Marshal is, will be the head of the Division of Community Risk Reduction. We've already got one Fire Prevention Officer that is in that division, and the Fire Marshal will answer to the, the Fire Deputy Fire Chief. This is a non-bargaining unit position, and currently, right now, the job description is waiting to be submitted to Civil Service for review. When we look at, how will we know if this position is successful for us and for the department? Currently, we have about 1,940 inspections annually that the Fire Department is responsible for. The ones that you look at, the approximately 500 that you see on the screen, are the ones that the Fire Marshal is directly responsible for. And when we talk about community risk reduction, you know, we're really just talking about prevention and all the activities that are surrounded by, surrounded and tied to that. When you look back at that last slide that talked about the second highest responsibility there, meaning the fire, fire inspections, the Fire Prevention permits, which is the top, oh, oh. Sorry about that. The Fire Prevention permits that you see at the top, those are issued to businesses so that they can operate safely for the public. Right now, in addition to all these that you see here, there's about 750 company-level inspections that we go out and do as well, that we haven't been able to do without the Fire Marshal. The Fire Marshal is also in charge of training and making sure that we set up and have everything that we need to go for those company officer, or company-level inspections as well. When we start, next we're going to talk about our record management system. We'll have some questions at the end. When we get into our record management system, these are the systems that are used to document everything that's related to emergency response and training. It's also how all the information that we use for any reports is extracted out of that system, and the reason why we have to replace that is because our current record management system, which is a product called Firehouse, is they've sold, they've been sold. Basically, the software will no longer be supported as of October of this year. It doesn't mean it won't work, it just means it's not going to be supported. The, the big key factor for that is that we are required by law to keep several records for several years and some even decades, depending on what those, what that information is. With a system that's not supported anymore, without data migration into a new system, we may lose all that, and so we, we can't afford to do that. So we do have to get a new record management system. Currently, sorry, currently, right now, we did put out an RFP. I'm going to pull this down a little bit, because I've got my glasses fogging up. Is this okay to take off here? Okay. Currently, we put out an RFP that had all the requirements, including data migration, and we were looking at that with, along with CFD. The reason why we were looking at that with Champaign Fire is just economy of scale. If we can agree upon the same modules, the same product, we will get that for, for a cheaper rate. So, and the success, how we'll know that that's a success is that we just, we get a new record management system. And then the ease of use, right now, Firehouse is a nightmare for our officers. It takes an abundant amount of time to just come back and do a report, and then sometimes there's areas that don't close out well, and they, they spend a lot of time looking for how to get out of that report. These new systems are built for firefighters, by firefighters. The software is way more friendly for our officers. They'll spend a lot less time inputting the data, and it makes it easier for us to extract the data from these new systems as well. So... When we look at the Advanced Emergency Medical Technician, the Urbana Fire Department is part of Carl Regional EMS System. We are registered with the Illinois Department of Health as an ALS, meaning Advanced Life Support Agency. The difference between being an Advanced Life Support Agency and a basic life support agency is basically the equipment, advanced invasive airways, cardiac procedures, and the ability to start IVs and administered medications in the field. IDPH recognizes five different levels of provider, which is MTB, which is basic, MTBD, basic defibrillator, MT stands for Emergency Medical Technician, if I skip that, EMTI, meaning intermediate, and then the AEMT, which is Advanced EMT, and EMT Paramedic. The ALS distinction that we carry requires the department to maintain medics at the EMTI and Advanced EMT Provider Level or higher. These certifications are a condition of employment for our members. We, at the time, we had a side letter with the, between the city and the union, because the intermediate level, the IDPH decided that they weren't going to support the intermediate level anymore. So there is an intermediate certification, but you can't acquire it anymore. So it took about 15 years for the state to restructure the EMTI certification into the AEMT certification, which is Advanced Emergency Medical Technician. It's now the equivalent of EMTI. So with that, now that those classes are offered again, that side letter that we had between the city and the union is up, and now we're contractually obligated to, to, to meet that training requirement for, for our members. With that, we currently have 18 members who are EMTIs, 17 members who are EMTPs, meaning paramedics, but 15 of those 35 certified members have time and age right now that they could retire today. That would put us in a huge deficit. So the reason why the, the request for the AEMT was so huge this year is because we have 14 members that we are trying to make sure we get into the training in January of '23, and then right after that, again, another offering in April. And so to do that, we have to, we have to budget and make sure that we could get those people trained and certified. If you want numbers on all that stuff, we could talk about it later. But basically, that's, that's the summary of the new positions, the record management system, which is not new, is just a change because of technologies changing, and then the reinstating of training certifications that we've, have been ongoing but have just been suspended. So...
Thank you, Chief. Any questions?
Her hand went up first.
Okay. We'll start on the left, my left. Chandra.
Thank you. How long has the Fire Marshal position been vacant?
Uh, the, the position has been vacant for about two years now, and so a combination of, um, overtime is being paid for members to go and do those duties, along with looking at a full-time inspector position that's not been able to be filled in, 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 uh, I'm sorry, in, in, in the community development. We looked at combining those things to make sure that we could have a position, a sustainable position, and get those duties done properly.
Thank you. And did you have a record management system in mind that you're talking with Champaign over, and do you happen to know the costs yet of, or range of costs for that?
Yeah, so, right now, we're just looking at two, two main companies fulfill the requirements of the RFP. We've already had one showing with one of the companies, which is, right now, looks like the one that we would probably want to use. We've got another one set up to give that company an opportunity to provide, or to show their product off as well. Like I said, this is not a new expense. We, and it's about $30,000, $30,000 for the implementation, data migration, stuff like that, and then the annual subscription for that service will go down after that. But the reason why there's a spike right now is because we have to change, change over systems.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Sharice, then Mary Alice.
Actually, Chandra asked, asked, asked my question, so...
Well, that's good, because I was talking to Mary Alice, not you anyway, so... Go ahead, Mary Alice.
Excuse me, I'm running the meeting.
It's the mayor's meeting, right?
She'll give a break.
So, so the, the Advanced Emergency Medical Tech Training and the, and the records management system seem to be kind of a no-brainer. I, I wanted to ask you a couple more follow-up questions beyond what Chandra had asked about the Fire Marshal position. So I believe Phil was in that position originally, and, and he had, when he had retired, there was a bit of restructuring that went through with the, I think that's when we started to have the Deputy Fire Chief position.
Yes.
Right? And so the, the argument at the time was, was that we didn't really need a full-time Fire Marshal. That was the argument at the time. I'm not saying it's, it's current, but I want to know what's changed since that time that argument was made.
Um, I wasn't here to make that initial argument, but what I assume happened is that they probably thought those responsibilities could be incorporated into that new position, and they're just too numerous and they're way too specific on, on what has to happen. So if that individual, the, the new Deputy Chief, would have taken on those responsibilities, he wouldn't have been able to do any responsibilities of the Deputy Chief. So it is basically also a new administrative position within the department, and it's specific to what it does. So I assume they thought that they could, they wanted to look and see if they could incorporate those, and it, and it wasn't able to be done.
So in the, in the budget book, we've got, uh, we've got two groups. We've got Fire Prevention here, and then we have, wait, we have Fire Prevention and then, is it, so this would be under the Fire Prevention?
Yes, we've got, our budget, yep, our budget is, consists of Fire Operations, Fire Prevention, and Fire Administration, and this position would be in Fire, Fire Prevention.
So how many people would be working in Fire Prevention then if we did move forward with the Fire Marshal?
Right now, that would make two. We currently have one position, that is our Campus Prevention Officer. So that's, that one is currently in place right now, and so this would make the second in Prevention.
Okay, so we would have two in place, but one would be dedicated to the campus area?
Yes.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. Thanks so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Chief? Okay. Thank you so much.
You are welcome.
Next presentation will be the Urbana Police Department. Chief Richard Searls will make that presentation, and we have a number of people here from the Police Department. Can you raise your hand so we can acknowledge your presence? Well, there's more of you. You should... Thank you.
Good evening. Everyone should have a copy of the notes, and I know that you have a packed agenda tonight, so I'm just going to run through these relatively quickly. The Police Department is asking for four specific budget requests this year. First is a Digital Forensic Specialist. Next is an Intelligence Analyst. The third is a Part-Time Evidence Custodian, and the fourth is something called ABEL Training. Let's talk about the Digital Forensic Specialist first. This position would focus on locating, extracting, and preserving digital evidence. This would be a civilian position, and it would be assigned to the Criminal Investigations Division. This is necessary because our in-house expert retired from the Police Department to take a corporate job. It's critical that the Police Department has this capacity for criminal investigations. We simply have to have the ability to deal with digital evidence in serious investigations, and we've used it successfully in such cases as homicide and sexual assault investigations. This requires specialized training and equipment, and these responsibilities would be shifted to a civilian from a detective. Costs are estimated to be $105,990, $90 a year. That includes salary, benefits, training, equipment, and this will be funded from the ARPA standard allowance for four years. The next position is an Intelligence Analyst. This person would focus on short and medium-term issues. This is different than the Crime Analyst, which is Melissa Hindren. A Crime Analyst focuses on long-term issues. An Intelligence Analyst would help direct police patrols, targeted investigations, help identify crime trends, assist with social media searches and monitoring for investigations, and the correlation of persons to crime and criminal organizations. The Intelligence Analyst would bring UPD into what's referred to as the Intelligence-Led Policing Era. This is simply using data to work smarter and not harder. This would also be a civilian position, and this person would be supervised by the Crime Analyst, Melissa Hindren. Costs are estimated to be $91,687 annually. Again, that includes salary, benefits, training, and equipment, and again, this would be funded from the ARPA standard allowance for four years. Third position is the Part-Time Evidence Custodian. This position would assist the current full-time evidence custodian with duties related to care, custody, and control of all evidence, both physical evidence and digital evidence. This also would be a civilian position. There's lately been a surge in digital evidence, surveillance video, body-worn camera video, squad car camera video, et cetera, and this has simply stressed the capacity of our one and only evidence custodian. This would ease the burden on the current evidence custodian, which is sorely needed and should have been addressed several years ago but was not. This position would be supervised by the full-time evidence custodian, and both would report to the Criminal Investigations Division Lieutenant. Costs are estimated to be $55,597 annually. That includes salary, benefits, and training, and this is going to be partially funded through the savings from the elimination of the full-time animal control position and contracting to Champaign County Animal Control. The fourth and final item is the ABEL Training. I previously sent you all some information about ABEL, because the information on it was pretty substantial. I don't know if you got a chance to take a look, but ABEL, it stands for Active Bystandership for Law Enforcement, and it evolved from the EPIC program, which stands for Ethical Policing is Courageous, which started in New Orleans. About 50 years of social science research has been used to develop this program, and it's currently managed by the Georgetown Law Center for Innovations and Community Safety. The purpose behind ABEL is to reduce misconduct, prevent mistakes, and improve wellness. This helps officers recognize the need to intervene to prevent unnecessary harm, and identify, overcome, and act despite their own inhibitors, such things as rank, bias, gender, et cetera. ABEL requires the support from two community groups and city leadership, and this is really intended to hold the department accountable for the training and the implementation of the program. It also requires an eight-hour training block of initial, initial training for each officer, and then two hours of annual training for every year thereafter. The course is absolutely free to the Police Department. The only cost is for the overtime for the officers for training. Costs are estimated to be $19,080 for the initial eight hours of training to train the entire department, and again, this is going to be funded from the ARPA standard allowance. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions? Chris?
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that. Okay. So, thank you for this. I just had a question. In terms of, you know, the two positions that are being funded with ARPA, is there a discussion about what the long-term plan would be for those positions?
That's a great question that I don't have the answer for. I don't know if Elizabeth Hannan would like to chime in on this?
I didn't quite hear the very last part of that. Could you repeat that?
Just the long-term plan for sustainability of the new, two new positions that'll be funded with the ARPA allowance if approved?
Right. So, so we recognize as we were working on the budget that there has to be a long-term solution, because ARPA doesn't last forever, obviously, and I think when we talked about the forecast, we talked about the fact that eventually there would probably be a need to look at, you know, potentially new revenues. So we'll have several years to kind of, kind of ease into that, but yeah, certainly there's a point in time where we have to have alternate funding for, for those positions.
So just to clarify that I'm hearing you correctly, the idea would be to explore those other funding opportunities over that four-year period to try to make sure it's sustainable. Is that correct?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Chris?
Uh, yeah, thanks for the presentation. Um, this is related to ABEL, but not specifically, and it's just a question I've wondered about. The number-one cause of death for officers is COVID, and the second-leading cause of death is suicide nationally. So my question to you, Chief, is, and I'm just wondering, is there, uh, mental health or a way for officers to somehow get some help if ever they're struggling or have an event that is traumatizing? Is there something that we have that's available to them to just help out and... Is there something that we have that's available to them to just help out in general for that kind of?
Great question. Um, the answer is yes. There's a, there is of course every, uh, option that there is to the general public in terms of things like suicide prevention. Um, I think what you're maybe sort of eating around the edge on is sometimes maybe there might be a reluctance on, on the part of officers to engage with, uh, you know, a suicide prevention hotline like that. There are law enforcement-specific, um, aids and helps, uh, in terms of hotlines, peer support programs and things. There's been a couple that have tried around here, um, sort of on a regional basis. Those haven't really gotten legs, um, but it is certainly something that we think about and certainly something we talk about. Of course, th- those are sort of more organized, um, resources. Of course, we have resources internally as well.
Okay.
You know, uh, it, it is, it is remarkable the amount of catharsis that occurs when two squad cars are pulled up next to each other.
Yeah.
Right? Because officers get an opportunity to debrief calls, talk about calls, talk about what they're, you know, they were feeling, what they're thinking, um, and, and to sort of get some of that out. Of course, um, the city also has an employee assistance program too. So there's several layers of helps for, for officers.
And, and it wasn't much regarding something as severe as suicide, but just in general, do officers have a opportunity to kind of, like you say, two squad cars or whatever it is to get that stuff out?
Yeah. I think, I think probably the most organized one that we've used, we, the department, people at the department have used fairly extensively is the, is the employee assistance program. And that can cover things like personal issues, marriage, kids, you know, loss of a family member, things like that, to something more, uh, professional in nature.
I swear you timed yourself. Did you time yourself for two minutes? You talked really fast.
No, I didn't time myself. I just know how long your agenda is tonight.
So I, I just wanted to be sure I heard you correctly on the, on the digital forensic specialist. You said that somebody had retired?
Correct.
Took that knowledge with them when they retired?
That's correct. Detective Sergeant Tim McNutt retired.
And did you fill that position?
Well, we filled the position, but we don't have that knowledge. That knowledge-
So you filled the position, but you, that person didn't bring with them the knowledge that, that the knowledge-
No. No. We're, we are, we're, we've got personnel that we're attempting to train, but of course they've got, in this case, it's a detective, but they've got a caseload, right? And so sometimes training opportunities present themselves that they might not be able to avail themselves of. Um, sometimes there's a financial, um, barrier to that training. You know, this training is very expensive, very expensive, very cumbersome. You have to have a particular skill set in order to do it. And so, um, this is, but again, this is something that we simply have to know how to do, right? I would, the way I've compared this, um, in terms of sort of the skill set is, uh, the ability to process digital evidence and preserve digital evidence is like, um, the collection of fingerprints were decades ago. It's simply something we have to know how to do.
And so the, the new positions, so the, um, the digital forensic specialist, the intelligence analyst, and the evidence custodian, all be civilians?
Correct.
Correct?
These are all civilian positions.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Shandra?
Hi, Chief Searls.
Hello.
For the ABEL training, um, it, it says support from two community groups. Do you have two groups in mind? Have you spoken to them about that?
I have not spoken with them. I thought it was premature to ask them before the money was approved.
Okay. Um, and then this, the training will be for every single officer in the department or specific?
Every single officer.
Okay.
From the chief to the newest officer.
Okay. And, um, back to the support, what does that support look like? Is it just like a recommendation letter or what is?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, it's, it's just a letter of support for the program, basically. And again, it, it really is, um, to hold the, because if I go and ask for, let's say, the NAACP, if I go to the NAACP and say, "Many Pearson, will you please write me this letter?", she's going to want to know what I'm doing, right? She's going to want to know what the training looks like. She's going to want to know, is it done? So that's the way that the letters hold the department accountable.
Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, chief.
You're welcome.
And the last of the presentations in this bunch is the, on the ARPA standard allowance, and it's Will Kolchowski, and then I'll, I'll hop in. Before we start, I wanted to acknowledge there's another group of employees here representing APSME, and I think most are from public work, so raise your hand. If you don't have a bright green or orange shirt on, we can. All right. Thank you for being here. So this, I, I'll just introduce this briefly. Um, as you remember, the, this is more for the public's information, the council voted a few weeks ago to allocate two and a half million dollars to the ARPA standard allowance. This money is now in the general fund, but we wanted, um, to, to track the use of ARPA funds so that we would be accountable to the public for them. So this summarizes the proposals or, uh, for the use of the ARPA standard allowance funds, which are now part of our general fund.
Thank you. All right. So as the mayor was saying, kind of the backdrop to this was the losses in our census population and the resulting loss of revenue. So that equates to a little over-
Could you speak up a little bit?
A little over six hundred thousand, sorry, a little over six hundred thousand dollars a year. So, um, in April, the city council elected to allocate 2.5 million of this ARPA standard allowance for the use of governmental services. And then we filed on the subsequent report that we would take that amount of standard allowance in the project expenditure report. So from an ARPA standpoint, um, you know, this money's kind of already, you know, reported on, done with, but then as the mayor's talking, this is kind of an extra step we're taking to kind of ma-, you know, see where that money goes and what expenditures were made possible by doing that. So here's a summary table, and I'll go over these pretty briefly, and then I have slides with a little bit of information about some of these, although a lot of these things have already been talked about in other departmental budgets. So what you see is what we have identified for the ARPA standard allowance with the digital forensic analyst, digital forensic specialist, intelligence analyst. Those are, uh, four-year expenditures, the ABEL training for one year. We have Munis, uh, vendor self-service upgrade, so that's our financial software, and this will allow payments to occur online. Uh, and this one has the added benefit of it will allow vendors to self-select, um, if they're a minority, minority-owned business or woman-owned business. Um, so that'll help as far as the procurement tracking goes in the future as well. So that, it has a dual purpose there. Um, additionally, there's a one-time expenditure for COVID-related expenditures, and this is kind of related to the PPE. Um, so currently on hand, we have enough, uh, more or less for kind of one wave as far as testing goes, masks, and that sort of things. Um, if we had another one in the fall, you know, this would be, give us money to get to the head of the curve. Um, in the past, if you kind of wait till it's already hit, um, you kind of run into supply chain issues. And then there's a couple one-for-one replacements. You have a transfer to the market at the square fund for 50,000 years. This is a one-time expenditure. And then you have a transfer to the local MFT to replace the revenue loss there, and that one is proposed here for four years. Um, a couple other initiatives are the Champaign County African-American Heritage Trail for, which is a $50,000 expense for one year, and then an employee retention slash incentive pay for 495,000 and change, and that is a one-time expenditure. See, what you see in the fiscal year '23 budget, that, uh, equates to about 950,000 dollars. Now, if you take in the multi-year expenditures, uh, this commits about 1.9 million expenditures, and that would leave a little over half a million left of the standard allowance. Um, that could be allocated at a different time, uh, for something else. So some of the public safety measures that you saw in there, the, was, you know, why, you know, how, kind of talking about the rationale of, you know, why we selected some of these things for the ARPA standard allowance. Um, you know, there's the council goal that we had a couple months ago, which was 1.1C, and I paraphrased here, just to keep the word short, but, you know, enhance the investigative and operational capacity. And so we have the two new positions for that. And then, um, you know, in the ARPA public input, there was, you know, a lot of support for, um, just police and solving crime, but also for police training and accountability. And that's kind of how we got to the ABEL training as an appropriate expenditure there. So going on to the motorfield tax, this is a one-for-one replacement of our, the loss of motorfield. Um, you know, and local motorfield can pay for, you know, the streets, sidewalks, and kind of other infrastructure. And this kind of relates to the council goal 3.1, and I think it was 3.2, which is kind of talk about, um, you know, improving the overall quality of our infrastructure. So this is for four years. Um, just a little technical note, we lost the revenue in our state transfers, and then this is proposed in our local motorfield tax, uh, fund, and that's just because you have a little bit more flexibility with how you spend it. There's also a replacement, um, actually a half to one, uh, the market at the square. So pre-pandemic, the market square had a fund balance, a positive fund balance, and a year-to-year basis operated, um, in the black, operated positively. Uh, with the pandemic, it was a rough couple of years, um, and there's been about $100,000 fund, uh, depleting the fund. So it currently has a negative fund balance, and a one-time transfer of $50,000 would be enough to put it, bring it back in the black. And then we're presuming here that it would operate on a sustainable level going forward like it was in the past. And then the Champaign County African-American Heritage Trail, and then the mayor has something to say about this.
Yes, I'll speak to this one. Um, we've been asked to participate and help support the Champaign County African-American Heritage Trail. This is a community-based and community-led initiative. It's to celebrate the lives and contributions of African-Americans in Champaign County. Um, it has a mission of educating residents and visitors about the rich history and contributions of the African-Americans in Champaign County. And the major, one major goal of the trail is to provide a free and accessible experience for all throughout the county. So there's a, uh, website, um, with much more information. There's a community group or a community-wide committee of about 30 individuals who've been working on this. This is at early stages. Um, Visit Champaign County Foundation is the, um, repository for the funds, but the initiative is chaired by Angela Rivers and Barbara Suggs Mason, two community members. And then committee members are individuals, representatives of, um, park districts, plan commission, the schools, the U of I archives, um, uh, just a wide range of individuals throughout Champaign-Urbana and, and, um, communities around the county. So the $50,000 allocation would support development of the trail sites over the coming years and also support programming and events. It would support these activities within the city of Urbana, and I envision it being curated in consultation among, with the Urbana Arts and Culture Program, among other entities. Um, as I said, it's at its beginning stages. Um, there are some proposals for the city of Urbana. There are some for the city of Champaign, but, but the, um, you know, this, this is, this is the seed money to get this, to get this initiative underway. And again, this would be a one-time allocation. Because this money is now part of the standard allowance in the general fund, you know, we're not operating under the same deadlines for, for spending the funds and allocating and spending, so we will have time in the coming years to utilize these funds to see this trail developed. Yes. Okay. And I can-
It helps if you turn it on. Um, and then, no, the next slide is the employee retention and incentive pay, which I believe the mayor was going to speak on as well.
Yes, I'll speak to that. Thanks, Will. So this is an allocation proposal for $2,000 for each city employee, full-time equivalent or part-time prorated. It's a one-time payment to recognize the extraordinary efforts and the extra workload over the past two years during the pandemic and actually, which is still continuing now. When the, um, ARPA, um, uh, funds were, were released by the federal government last year and the treasury rules were released, they at that time recognized the, um, importance of premium pay and included a formula for calculating that. Since then, they've expanded the definitions, provided more flexibility, and particularly now as part of the standard allocation, we have the flexibility to really do what, what we think is fair for, for the employees. So the reasons, some of the reasons behind this, as I mentioned, is in general, the, the, the absolute extra work and, um, workload from the past two years due to COVID. Um, one is the COVID-caused absences, not just of the employees themselves who tested positive, contracted the disease, but whose loved ones did as well. So they were in, employees who were required to quarantine because of exposure to the disease. So those things combined resulted in, um, uh, crease, extended absences for people. Um, and one of the clearest examples of this is the impact on our first responders, the emergency personnel, police, fire, EMTs, where we are required to staff 24/7. And we're not, we don't have the option of leaving those positions vacant. So absences related to COVID had to be kept filled, and that meant mandatory overtime for many, many people. And I know people will say, "Well, they got paid for that." But there's no accounting for the cost of that, um, months and months and months of required overtime, the stress on individuals and their families, and the time spent at work and under very stressful conditions. Um, and that includes also front desks in the police department. That's staffed until 11:00 PM every night. The snow had to be removed from the streets. So there were a lot of essential positions that had to be filled and essential duties that had to be performed throughout the last couple of years with, with no options to not do that. And, um, secondly, not only were people working extra hours, but those who were here were having, shouldering extra workloads. With absences and vacancies, the work still had to get done, and this was every single department in the city. Um, so not only were people sometimes working more hours than they normally would, but they had to do more in the hours that they worked. Just examples, it's, it's, you know, it's the clearest examples again are in our first responders, but you take community development services. We processed millions of dollars in COVID relief funds in the last couple of years, state and federal funds. Every single grant that came into the city had to go out through the city. We had to make sure that the, we, um, were implementing the grants appropriately, reporting appropriately. And so everything related to COVID added a job to people's jobs. The other work all got finished and done, and we made a lot of progress in the last couple of years. But COVID added another job to our jobs. Same thing in the finance department. The amount of money flowing in and through the city that went out to individuals and businesses and residents and support, finance was working great deal of extra hours just to, to keep up with that. When we made all the changes in our plant, in our zoning ordinance, in adjusting, um, uh, code or regulations to allow for sidewalk sales or outdoor use of public spaces or curbside pickup for food, or any of the dozens of changes we made to adjust to the pandemic to make safe spaces for people to, um, to eat and shop and work and play outside, that had, that involved our zoning folks and our community development specialists. So, um, uh, and economic development as well. And I can say from, as, as the, uh, liquor commissioner and with my deputy liquor commissioner, we fielded and spent hundreds of hours on the phone with our local businesses explaining the new regulations. We actually did a lot of, I don't want to say hand-holding, but we did a lot of working with people through all these changes that were happening every single day. And all of that occurred in addition to our regular, our regular duties. Um, the other thing this reflects is the higher COVID risk that our workers faced. And, and actually, anyone who showed up in person to work on a daily basis experienced higher risk. And that's not, it's first responders, of course, but it's everybody who came to work. And there were a lot of people who could work from home and work remotely. We did that, but a number of us were here every single day. And, um, the, uh, the, uh, the, the higher risk of disease was present, especially with our, but especially with our police and fire department, our EMTs. Every single day, they interacted very closely with people who may or may not have been exposed. And I know our fire department were transporting COVID patients in some cases to the hospital. So, so they knew people had COVID, people called us when they had COVID, and sometimes we were the transport for the, those folks. But that higher risk of COVID exposure was present every single day. So, so they knew people had COVID, people called us when they had COVID, and sometimes we were the transport for the, those folks. But that higher risk of COVID exposure was present every single day and still is, actually. And finally, as you've heard, I'm sure, over and over again, the increased competition for employees. We, we are, we are a regional, well, we, we have a regional labor pool. We've, we are facing regional, statewide, nationwide competition. We have some of the best employees anywhere around. People know that. And, and our, our employees are highly sought after. You've heard about the certain, in certain positions, but I can tell you, it's every single position. And we have lost employees to people who can pay more. So when you combine the increased workload, the increased hours worked, the extraordinary job that people have done to keep essential services, and not only to maintain services, we have made enormous progress in the last few years as well. I would like to offer this one-time payment for our employees.
And then the last thing that we'd like to talk about with the standard allowance.
Is your mic on?
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, sorry. I can't hear the difference on my end, but, um.
We can.
So, you know, we went through all the expenditures that we're allocating. And the special census is, we didn't put it as an allocation, but as something that, when we look at the unallocated money, you know, that's something that, it could go towards a special census in future years. So we talked about, you know, finding a new source of revenue. One of the ways to do that could be, could be to conduct a special census. Now, the cost of special census is to be determined, but the city does pay the entire cost to do a special census. So that, you know, in order to do it, the burden would be on us. And, you know, if you do a little bit Googling from, you know, what it costs in other municipalities, you get a big spread because you can do, you can do singular geographies. So part of the work is figuring out, you know, if we did do one, you know, was it a whole town, just part of the city, things like that. But either way, the city pays for all of it. And then the city can begin the special census process on January 1st, 2023. So once we kind of get that process underway, understanding, you know, what that might be, that could be a future allocation of standard allowance that we might go, decide to go with or propose with. And then this is just a table again, but that's all I have.
Questions for Will. Sharice.
You have any idea how much our estimated cost, at least, of a special census? Could we have any, you know?
No, I mean, if you Google it, you know, it's, that money may or may not be enough. It just kind of, it really depends on the geography. And then, you know, some of the old studies are several years ago with a different cost of labor. So I couldn't really speculate on what the cost would be.
Okay, thank you.
So I was trying to do quick calculations here. In terms of, we have three items here that would be reoccurring and then several items that are one-time. So the, the reoccurring would be approximately what proportion of the 1.9?
Five million?
Eight hundred, and then what, 1.2 million out of the 1.9 million?
Roughly, yeah.
I mean, just rough numbers.
Yeah, four. 1.3 maybe, off the top of my head.
Okay, all right. The table is a little misleading.
Yeah, it's, you also have the cost increase a little bit with each year too. So, you know, the.
Sure.
Digital, so, yeah, it's, that number isn't easily identifiable from this table. But, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
Sorry, I have one more question. So the ARPA, this is part of the budget now. So whether or not we approve it or don't approve it, it goes with the budget amendment, these charges here. Is that how, is that how we're moving forward without we're spending this?
I'm going to let Elizabeth answer that.
So, so I think what you're asking is, will these be included in the budget that we present to you for adoption?
Well, we don't, we're not going to have a separate budget amendment that just says, this is how we're spending our ARPA standard allowance, right? This is all incorporated in the existing budget. So if we agree with the distribution of funds, then we would agree with it. We wouldn't make any changes in the budget. There's no other additional thing to do. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the home ARP update.
This is just an overview of where we're at in the process of the home ARP allocation So as you know, there's several steps in this process. We're going to cover the home consortium details, the American Rescue Plan, needs assessment and gaps analysis, the consultation and future steps. So the Urbana Home Consortium is comprised of the city of Urbana, city of Champagne, and RPC. And we can do projects anywhere within unincorporated Champagne County. So not Rantoul, but pretty much everywhere else. Our home consortium allocation is $2.9 million. And if you remember, we came to you in September, October, where HUD had released just the administrative allocation part. And that's what we've been working under recently. So with the home allocation plan, in order to receive the final funding, we have to create this plan, do consultation, and present it to HUD for review. So we have been working with the city of Champagne, which Betsy Barclay is here from the city of Champagne, the county, which is JD McClanahan, and the city of Urbana staff, to talk about process, you know, who we're going to do outreach to, and then how we're going to proceed with the allocation plan. There are four eligible activities, protection of, or in preservation of affordable housing, tenant-based rental assistance, supportive services, homeless prevention services, and housing counseling, and then finally, purchase and development of non-congregate shelter. And with those activities, we have to meet the needs of the following qualifying populations: homeless, at-risk of homeless, those fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, veterans, and other populations where assistance would prevent the family's homelessness, as well as serve those with greatest risk of housing instability. So has been very clear, although it's been ever-changing, but the last, the last directions we got, these are the plan requirements. We have to do a summary and results of the stakeholder consultation process and a, provide a summary of any public comments that we received, give a description of the home ARP qualifying populations, an assessment of any unmet needs that are in the community, assessments of gaps in housing, shelter, and services, a summary of the planned use of the home ARP funds based on those needs, estimate the number of housing units produced or preserved, and then finally, a description of any population preferences. So in December of 2021, we issued an RFP for consultation services, because given the limited staff and grants, we just didn't have the capacity to move this plan forward. And so with that, we received two proposals and awarded the, the RPC, or RFP to RPC to start this process. So JD's going to cover the local process and where we're at to date.
Yeah. So to start off, I just wanted to provide a quick image of the original work plan that was proposed and where we are in that process right now. So you can see on the far left, the five main, the five kind of primary tasks to work through. So just preparing for the overall process, working on existing data analysis, consulting with stakeholders, engaging with the public, and then based on all of those previous processes, working on synthesizing all of that into an allocation plan. And you can see on the right, here in June, we are kind of in the middle of, we've gathered all of this data and interviews and engagement, and we are in the middle of kind of synthesizing that all into a draft, a draft plan for, for the allocation plan. Before we, before I move on, I just wanted to provide, provide a quick definitions of the qualified populations that Sheila mentioned previously. So the first group is the homeless population, which is any households who lack fixed, regular, or adequate nighttime residence, or who will imminently lose their primary resident, or unaccompanied youth under 25 years of age. And just to provide a quick visualization of that, this is the, this is a graph of the local point-in-time count, which is kind of one way to try to, try to get an idea of the, the, the numbers of homeless population living locally. So this is comparing the 2022 count with the 2021 count. No huge differences between those, but both around 100, 140 individuals counted during these point-in-time counts, which kind of capture one moment. They're not kind of all-encompassing, the, the point-in-time count has its limitations, but it's, it's one way to, to try to wrap our heads around the, the numbers for local homeless populations. The, the next group that is defined by HUD for, that can qualify for the home ARP funding is those at-risk of homelessness. So those are households with an annual income below 30% of the median family income for the area, that also do not have sufficient resources or networks to avoid moving into an emergency shelter, and have one of a list of conditions that you can see below that include things like having to, having to move several times recently because, because of economic reasons, living in somebody else's home, exiting an institution, being notified, notified that their lease will be terminated, living in a hotel, or living in severely overcrowded housing. The next population is those fleeing domestic violence. So that can include those fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking. And then the final group that we'll provide a definition for is the other population, or could be qualified as housing unstable. So those are households who are, who were previously homeless and need assistance to avoid returning to homelessness, households making less than 30% of area median income and paying more than half of their income toward housing, and then households making less than or equal to 50% of area median income, who have one of those list of attributes that I discussed on the at-risk slide. So things like living in a hotel, living in someone else's home, or exiting an institution. So the one step of this process was the consultation. So for that, we identified 20 organizations that work with, that work with the qualified populations that I, I just mentioned, and scheduled interviews with, with each of those organizations, trying to get an idea of what the services that they provide in the community, gaps and needs that they identify, preference populations that they would have for this funding. In addition to the actual interviews, we also provided an online survey consultation on Survey Monkey and emailed it to the Champagne County Continuum of Service Providers to the homeless or CSPH email list, as well as other relevant service providers, to provide different organizations or stakeholders the opportunity to respond, even if they weren't able, even if we didn't conduct an in-person interview with them. Below, you can see a list of the consulted organizations sorted by the different categories that had required each recipient to, to consult. So continuums of care, domestic violence service providers, homeless service providers, public agencies working with these populations, organizations addressing fair housing, civil rights, and the disabled, public housing agencies, and veterans agencies. And this is just a quick, tiny slice of the, the, the results that we got from these consultations. So you can see in the top left, the, within the four categories that Sheila mentioned for how this money can be spent, the priorities that were provided. So overall, the consultation staff prioritized non-congregate shelter as their highest priority, followed by supportive services, then tenant-based rental assistance, and then affordable housing. Looking at specific populations that should be prioritized for funds, you can see families and the disabled were the two most commonly identified as priority populations, followed by several other population groups that, that could be prioritized. And then the, the text at the bottom left just mentions a few recurring gaps and needs that, that came up through the, this consultation process, including year-round, 24/7, low-barrier shelter, emergency housing for families, better supportive services across all housing types, making sure that those at risk don't get to the point of homelessness, providing affordable rental housing throughout the housing market, focused support for high need groups, and also just staffing and resource capacity for, for organizations serving these groups.
We will be providing these slides to you, too.
Yes. The next, next step that I'm going to talk about was public outreach. So this was also, this was conducted through an online Survey Monkey survey that was available from the end of April through the end of May, that was distributed through the CSPH mailing list, as well as non-continuum community groups, nonprofits, neighborhood groups, social media by local governments. This public outreach received 128 total responses. I'll provide a quick overview of the response content in, in the next slide, but this is just a, one look at demographics illustrating that the populations that could benefit from this funding, we were able to get a substantial amount of feedback from them, that the, the most commonly, the most common income category was households below $25,000 that responded. And then the, the graph at the right is basically respondents could check a box for any, any of the attributes that might qualify them for, for being in these home ARP qualified population categories. And I believe, I don't remember the exact numbers, but a little over a third of respondents indicated that they met one of these categories on that, that right graph. So more than a third of respondents were people that could potentially benefit from, from this home ARP funding. Again, a quick summary of feedback. So top left again is a ranking of within the four categories for what this money could be spent on, what the public saw as highest priority. So the, the number one priority for the public was supportive services, followed by affordable housing, then tenant-based rental assistance, and then purchase and development of non-congregate shelter. On the right, you can see the public was asked for the goals that should be met when spending this funding. And the most, the three most common identified goals were providing supportive services and greater stability to households to kind of keep them, keep them in a stable situation, providing more affordable housing in the area, and then ending or lessening homelessness in the area. And the, the text at the bottom left is just a few kind of representative quotes of the, the type of feedback that the public provided. So focusing on supportive services and assistance to families for stability, providing more options for low-income people, and providing the shelter spaces and facilities to prevent anyone in our, in our community from needing to, to sleep outside. So with all of that information provided, we're just going to talk through the kind of next steps that, that home consortium staff is, is working on. So currently, based on the information provided and all, all the data that's been accumulated, staff is working on developing a draft plan for how, how this funding could be spent, based on kind of synthesizing all of this data together. This draft plan will be presented to the public in, I believe, in a city, in a Urbana City Council meeting, and open to a 15-day public hearing that is required by HUD. The, basically, based on that presentation and the feedback that's received, the final allocation plan will be developed based on implementing that feedback, and will be submitted to HUD later this summer. And then within 45 days after submission, HUD will either provide, provide the allocation for us to allocate these funds locally, or instructions for how the plan should be revised to, to meet their, meet their requirements. So I believe that is, that is the, the final slide. So I think Sheila and I are both happy to answer any, any questions that council members may have.
Any questions for Sheila or JD? Mary Alice.
Thanks for putting all that together. I, my only question really is, so you had a, you had a community survey, and then you also had these kind of phone calls where you talked with these different people who provide services to, to get their input. And you showed some things in terms of the themes, the number of mentions you have. And you showed some things in terms of the themes, the number of mentions you have in consultation, but then I'm assuming that you also had themes from your survey?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
And were those open-ended responses coded, or were they?
Yes.
They were open-ended responses coded?
Yes.
So what's the N? Do you, it would be helpful to know, like, how many comments you got. So having 16 versus 100 comments is different than having 16 out of 20 comments, right?
Yes.
So.
Yes, yeah, I can, I think, yeah, we're, we're trying to provide a, a quick, quick run-through today.
Sure.
But the, the actual allocation plan that, that will be available to council.
Okay.
Later on, will have much, much more in-depth descriptions of kind of those, the, the, kind of quantifying and qualifying all of the feedback that's been, been provided.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you much.
Thank you.
Next item is council input and communications. Jaya.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly say how much I appreciate these various budget presentations. It's really exciting to see some of the creative ways of filling some of those needs for additional staffing. And I'm also grateful to see that city staff is getting recognition for all their, their hard work as part of what's being proposed in this budget. So just very grateful for all the information and also the direction of everything I've seen coming out of this budget so far.
Sharice.
I think what I want to say mostly is, I really appreciate how the fire department, the police department, and our, our, all of our departments are doing their budgeting and keeping in mind our strategic goals that we've set. And in addition to that, I would like to say, I love seeing the fire department and the police department at Public Works and everyone coming out and supporting what you want to see done, you know, or what you think you need at least, and that, and supporting your superiors, and that, I've not seen that before. And I, and I think that it's important in the sense that we can put faces to departments, and we know how the decisions that we make will affect you. So thank you for coming out.
Any other comments? I just have a couple of announcements. Was there a comment? No, okay. Just a reminder, our next meeting next week will be on Tuesday, the 21st. On Monday, the city will be observing Juneteenth for the first time. It's now an official city holiday. Again, on next Tuesday, I want to remind folks that the Regional Planning Commission staff will be back, and they will be giving an update on the accelerated, their proposal for the accelerated process for the ARPA allocation, so that we can get this, get this process moving. Third, we will observe on Friday, the 17th, we will be at noon in front of the city building. We'll be reading a proclamation for Juneteenth, as well as raising the Juneteenth flag. So all are invited to attend that day. And then the next, and that's, again, that's noon Friday of this week. And then on Saturday, HV Neighborhood Transformations is holding a celebration, including a Juneteenth celebration at Crestview Park, and I believe it begins at 2:00 PM. Is that right, Darius?
Yes.
Okay. And then there's another celebration, Sunday in Douglas Park, 3:00 PM?
Three to eight.
Three to eight PM. So this is our first official recognition of this very important date in our nation's history. So I hope you can all join us on Friday noon. And that's, that's all I have. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. There is none. Reports of standing committees. Councilmember Bishop.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I'd like to move for approval the consent agenda with resolutions, resolutions approving and authorizing the execution of subrecipient agreements.
Shandra, is your mic on?
Yes, it's, yes.
Okay. It's an omnibus, so, yeah.
It's on the consent agenda, but I believe you need to read each item on the consent agenda. And then there'll be one vote, but, but lots of reading for you.
Okay. So I move for approval, resolution number 2022-06-045R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission Youth Assessment Center, resolution number 2022-06-046R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a sub, subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Housing Authority of Champaign County Youth Field, resolution number 2022-06-047R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Steam Genius Doing Business as Hip Hop Express, Hip Hop Express, resolution number 2022-06-048R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, HV Neighborhood Transformation, Neighborhood Voices, resolution number 2022-06-04R, 49R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, East Central Illinois Refugee Mutual Assistance Center, Newcomer Immigrant Student Support, resolution number 2022-06-05R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Urbana Neighborhood Connections Community Study Center, resolution number 2022-06-051R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Urbana Neighborhood Connections, Urbana Youth Development Program, resolution number 2022-06-052R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, Urbana Park District, Splash, Students Playing and Learning After-School Hours Program, resolution number 2022-06-05R, a resolution approving and agreement, authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, youth services agreement, the Well Experience Family Care Program. And lastly, resolution number 2022-06-056R, a res, a supplemental resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motive, state motive fuel tax for West Windsor Road resurfacing.
I will second that long list.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Horsy?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And on the regulars agenda, I move for approval, resolution number 2022-06-4, -044R, a resolution approving and authorizing the School Resource Officer Program Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Urbana and Urbana School District Number 116.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, or moved by Shandra, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Mary Alice.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say, I know that we all thanked the people who came and spoke, and thanked the, the students, but I, I wanted to strengthen the message and say that I feel like it is the students' voices that really changed the minds of some people in terms of what they thought about this program. And so I, I'd like for them, hopefully, to hear that their voice has power, that their voice has actually made some of the decisions here at city council, and that will hopefully positively influence their life. So that's, that's what I wanted to add tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Horsy?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And resolution number 2022-06-054R, a resolution of the City of Urbana in support of tax increment financing for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Shandra, seconded by Jaya. Is there further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Horsy?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item, oh, sorry.
Next item is resolution number 2022-06-055R, a resolution approving a revision of the Enterprise Zone Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Urbana, Illinois, and the, and Champaign County, Illinois, for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Shandra, seconded by Sharice. Is there further discussion?
Yes.
So I know that there was some conversation about the May and the one meeting, and more than one meeting. I didn't know if there was any resolution, or if the proposal is as-is, because I didn't see any communication last week about that.
I believe it's as, as-is.
It is as-is. Okay, all right, thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Horsy?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And lastly, I move for approval, ordinance number 2022-06-021, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing number of Class GH liquor licenses for Martin Place Inc., Doing Business as Martin Place Inc. at 1804 North Cunningham Avenue in Urbana.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Shandra, seconded by Chris.
I will add that per the council request, the map of all the gaming locations in the City of Urbana was sent out to council and included the 10, the nine locations where we have gaming halls, and then the 10 locations where video gaming terminals are located, either in bars, restaurants, or American Legion VFW. A couple of other explanations on the map there, it does, it also showed that in the City of Urbana, we have a buffer of 500 feet around any gaming halls. You can't have two gaming halls within 500 feet of each other, and historically, that was done to prevent people from taking over a strip mall and, you know, having a gaming six terminals in five stores adjacent to each other, and having a little, you know, mini casino. There's also a 250-foot buffer around low businesses that have gaming terminals, such as the bars and restaurants. They're also, and that refers to, also refers to the distance from things like churches, schools, daycares, and that sort of thing. The question on how many were located north of University Avenue, the gaming halls, there's, that's indicated on the map as well. So there's one on North Lincoln Avenue. There are several concentrated, either in east or west, Five Points, or in south, three of them along Philo Road in South Urbana. And again, they, they only can be located on our major arterials to begin with, so there's kind of a limited, limited number of corridors you can actually have them if you're going to have the independent gaming halls. So I don't know if there were any other questions that folks had. Mary Alice.
So you just said that they can only be located on the major arterial roads.
Well, I think it's B, I'm sorry, it should be B, I think it's the B4 business district.
It's the B4 business district. So are there areas in the city in which they are not currently located that has that zoning?
Where they're not located that has that zoning?
Yes. I mean, I'm looking at this chart, and, and they're, they're pretty concentrated. So I'm just, from what you said, I mean, we can't put them in residential areas.
Correct.
Are there B4 areas that currently don't have any? I used to have a zoning map up here, but I think.
Yeah, I don't have my map with me. Didn't look at that particular question.
I didn't ask it then, so I understand why.
Logically, they tend to, they want to be near the high-traffic areas, so that's where you'll see them, along University Avenue, or closer to the interstate. So the one on North Lincoln is just south of the interstate, the one on North Cunningham, literally just south of I-74.
So the, the main, Lincoln, Cunningham, Philo, University, what are the other major areas that they could potentially be?
Downtown, Main Street, two of the one, well, we have the American Legion downtown, and then we have several bars and restaurants with the gaming terminals. We have VFW on East Main Street, Washington Street. There's a couple of establishments with terminals. Total number of, total number, according to the April 2022 Gaming Board Report, we have a total of, let's make sure I've got the right city here, 20 establishments with gaming terminals, either standalone video gaming parlors, or bars, restaurants, and veterans groups with terminals. There's a total of 110 terminals in the city, according to the Illinois Gaming Board. So we have 10. We currently have nine gaming parlors at the moment, and this would add a 10th. Sharice.
Yeah, I know you're talking about basically gaming, gaming halls, but there are also restaurants that have video gaming. I'm trying to remember if there is also hotels. I think, I think both of the hotels, I'm not sure, I can't remember, and one of them used to have.
Eastland Suites has some.
Yeah, but I thought the, off of Lincoln Avenue.
It's possible, we have.
The Radisson Inn, I thought, and I also thought the Holiday Express, but maybe not, or one of them had, also had video gaming. I'm not sure.
Yeah, we have a total of 20 establishments with terminals in them, nine standalone gaming parlors, and 11 establishments. So that's the hotel bars, the.
Right.
Restaurants, et cetera.
Right. So that's basically my concern, is how many are located in, well, in Ward 3, actually. There's a lot of them that are located in Ward 3. Not necessarily gaming halls, but video gaming opportunities. And I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to legislate anybody's morality or anything like that, but I also see that there's a disparity of numbers regarding video gaming in Ward 3 as opposed to other parts of the city.
Just looking at my list here, there are no terminals in the Radisson, which is the former Holiday Inn. So it's Urbana Gardens has some, as well as.
Those, those.
Luckies.
Right across the street from each other, basically.
Yep.
Then you have on University and Race, you have Vicki's or somebody's on University and Race Streets. In the Cunningham, Five Points, you've got Ruby's and Lacy's. I can think, trying to think if there's some more even. So it, there, there, there seems to be quite a few video gaming spots in my ward. And so, and they're not, you know, a couple of them are within walking distance of each other, to be honest. So I, I would, I'm just point, I'm making that point. Even though this one is not in my ward, it's ward-adjacent, and I think the, just in the area, I just noticed that there's, there's a lot, a lot of video gaming there, and I'm, so I, I probably will not be supporting this.
Shandra, you have a comment?
Yes, I was going to ask, or I guess it's time for questions are over, but I was going to suggest we consider maybe thinking about a cap on the number of places or terminals in our city, if we, if this is a concern going forward.
That's one, that is one policy approach to take. Previous councils wanted the opportunity to vote on each one, so essentially, the cap is whatever the existing number is. And then in other communities, if you set a cap, then you don't vote on any individual project, or any individual proposal until it would bump up against that cap. project, or any individual proposal until it would bump up against that cap. So this gives, that was the thinking of the previous council. This gives an opportunity to consider each one individually. And a standalone parlor is different from, you know, terminals in an existing restaurant or bar, so you vote on every single, you vote on every single liquor license. But that's another policy approach to take. Chris.
Are we able to separate out and determine how much money we make from, the city makes from these gaming operations?
Yes, and I would, I have the gaming report, that's basically January through April of this year, and at this point, the city has received $176,000 approximately in revenue from the terminals during this first four months of the year.
And where did that money go, just in a general budget?
It goes to the general fund to support your general city services.
Okay. Well, just to piggyback on what Sharice was saying, if in fact, these gaming terminals are predatory businesses taking advantage of low-income African Americans, I wonder if we could target that money to say something that would benefit, like the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewage problem, or something like that. Like, that money would be turned back into the Ward 3 neighborhood.
Well, that's a policy decision for another day. What we, but anytime in general, then if you're earmarking funds for a certain purpose, then you have to have a replacement for that revenue. So that's a bigger, much bigger policy decision. So before you, it's a question of voting on this particular application. Mary Alice.
So Shandra, to answer your question about putting a cap on, it's, in my opinion, it's kind of similar to like how we deal with liquor licenses. So every time there's an application, it comes to city council, and that cap gets raised. It's very similar, it's exactly the same for the video licenses, sorry, the gaming licenses, not the video. My main concern, I've always had concerns about these, primarily because it takes a lot of money out of the hands of individuals. I recognize this is a legal thing that is allowed in our state and in our city, and I'm not trying to prevent anybody from participating in this form of entertainment, but I do think that we have a responsibility, that we don't congregate a lot of these types of opportunities for people in neighborhoods that aren't as affluent. And so for that reason, I'll be voting against this.
Any other discussion? Shandra.
So I guess, I guess I don't understand the definition of a cap. If it's a cap and we keep moving it, it's not a cap.
Correct.
So I guess what I'd be saying is we actually have a cap, and then people would know, like, oh, I can't open one up because they're at their capacity for gaming institutions. But, you know, that's, that's what I was thinking about when I say cap, but I understand voting on each one. But I guess when it comes before us, it makes, it seem like there's not a cap, and so we just say yes or no.
Well, there have been at least, I believe there were two other parlors that were voted no, that were not approved by the city council. One was actually very close to the city building, and I believe there was another, another one was on Washington Street by Lehman Avenue. So neighborhood context was considered. And that was the purpose behind considering each one individually, was so that people could take neighborhood context, among other factors, into account. So those two were not approved. So council has had the discretion to vote it up or down. What, the other thing we always do is, when a proposal like this comes to us, we always notify the alderperson in the ward that it'll be located, so they have a chance to talk with the individual if they want, and also consider it as well. So, any other discussion? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Ms. Colacetti?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
No.
Okay, that motion does not pass. All right. Last, any reports of, that's, thank you, Shandra, that's our regular agenda for tonight. Last item is reports of special committees. We don't have one. Reports of officers. One thing I wanted to call your attention to was you got the monthly failure to comply report. That's the result of the inspections. And based on your request last month, an explanation is, notes are included on each of those that gives you the status of where these violations are. So whether, it ranges from the property's vacant pending sale, the violations have been corrected, and we're working with them to obtain payment, et cetera. But anyway, it gives you an explanation of where these are. And again, these inspections are generally, that we do, our building safety inspections are designed to get the problems fixed. So we work with property owners, especially in the last few years, when it's been very difficult to get people to do the work, where, you know, the main goal is to get the problems fixed and improve the safety of the residential, living conditions. Okay, with no further business bef, oh, one last announcement. We are pleased to announce the opening of I Heart Mac and Cheese on, at Five Points, and the official ribbon-cutting is Wednesday, June 15th. All are invited. 10:30 in the morning. But I'm told it's already had a soft opening, so you don't have to wait till Wednesday. All right, with no further business before this body, we are adjourned. Thank you.